Ready to begin, thank you.
Morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Bi-State Development Agency Operations Committee meeting to order on Friday, January 27, 2023, at 8:30 a.m. Myra, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Winmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Cox. Commissioner Golladay. Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Beach.
Here.
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Postello. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Gladney. Commissioner Moore. You may proceed.
Thank you. I think we've had some public comment cards that were received. Myra, will you please read the public comments?
Yes, we received seven public comments. The first is from Jim Zavist regarding Via Metro St. Louis. We received a comment from Patrick Douglas Richmond regarding the use of rickshaws and double-decker buses as another form of metro transit. And we received five comments from Mr. Shannon Vila regarding the following topics. Metro input from riders, update since last meeting, improvement seen and next steps. Our Metro, the system for riders in the public, Nashville MTA staffing innovations, and Nashville MTA We Go Transit. It should be noted that all comments were distributed to the commissioners prior to the meeting for review. In addition, the comments in their entirety are contained in the online meeting materials and will be included in the minutes from today's meeting.
Thank you. We can move on to the approval of the minutes of the October 14th Operations Committee open meeting. The meetings have been provided to the committee for review. Are there any additions, deletions, or edits? Hearing none, a motion is needed to approve.
So move.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the contract modification for the on-call GEC services, and I think Tom Curran is going to provide some comments.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. This request is for a contract modification to our existing contract with WSP for General Engineering Consulting Services. In early 2020, Bi-State requested proposals from qualified engineering firms for on-call services in a number of areas, including architectural, civil, mechanical, and structural engineering, and surveying environmental, geotechnical, and materials testing. WSP was the highest-ranked firm in that competition, and they've been serving as our on-call engineering consultant since that time. The initial contract period is from July 2020 to June 2023, plus two option years. Due to the increasing number of in-house projects at Bi-State, WSP's contract is expected to exceed the $1.5 million amount. WSP has already completed 17 task orders for Bi-State with a total cost of $1.3 million, and it is expected that we'll continue to require engineering support from WSP. Additional work will be issued by task orders with funding provided by federal and local sources. So management is requesting that the Operations Committee recommend approval of a modification to our WSP contract for architectural and engineering services in the not-to-exceed amount of $2.5 million for the initial contract period ending June 30, 2023, and two optional years through June 2025. This request is coming through Chris Paylor, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Tom? Tom, the only question I have is the two and a half million. Does it include any time period after the existing contract?
No, just through June 2025. So I had asked Chris the same question. I said, it seems like the, you know, the initial contract is ending very shortly, but it's the two optional years that we would need the money for.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate the clarification.
I have a question. Tom, when you say they were the highest-ranking firm, how does that, what, how do you imagine?
So there is always a selection committee that ranks the firms based on the scoring criteria. In this case, this predates me, but I'm sure it was members of the Engineering Department that served on that. And typically, there's a price component as well, but it's mostly based on experience.
And so when does this, when does this current contract end?
So the current contract ends in June 2023 with two optional years. So typically, those option years are exercised, and so the period that we're approving this for is through June 2025. So two years and five months.
Just my opinion, I'd like to have more information on this before I would be voting yes for it, so that's all I have to say, thank you.
So just for clarification, Commissioner Simmons, I want to make sure that we get through this existing contract without the two optional years with sufficient funding. Would you be, would that be acceptable to you?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so Tom, do we need any additional funds to go through the end of this, the end of the contract without the options?
So based on the money that appears to be left, I would say it's $200,000, so I really think this is about the option years. So even though Chris is not available, I think that it could be delayed, and we would have sufficient money for the time being, but we'd probably bring it back to you for consideration in spring.
Okay, so I'm hearing that that some of the commissioners would prefer not to vote on the extension of the option years until after we have more information. Is that correct? We don't really have a quorum, and we don't need a quorum for these kinds of committee votes, but I want to make sure that people are comfortable. Herb, is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Then rather than call for a vote on the contract modification, I'm just going to hold that to the next meeting? If that's acceptable to those present?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Tom, I think the next item is also we're going to hear from you and Darren Curry about it, and it's a contract modification on the sole-source contract with Motorola Solutions, the upgrade obsolete dispatch console network.
Yes, thank you. This is a request for a contract modification. It's again to an existing contract that we have. This one's with Motorola Solutions, Inc., and this is for upgrade and expansion of the dispatch council networks. Bi-State entered into a sole-source agreement with Motorola Solutions in 2013, and at that time, the Board of Commissioners authorized a capital product budget of $33 million for the design, procurement, and installation of a voice and data radio communications network that would be capable of meeting our transit operation and safety needs well into the future. So of that $33 million approved originally, Motorola has already been awarded five contracts within that amount, a total of $14.9 million. The current dispatch council networks that support rail operations, public safety, bus operations, and call ride are at the end of their useful life, and they're no longer being supported by the manufacturer. Also, because the networks are not able to be expanded, they can't be used in support of our safety and security efforts that we're pursuing through the Real-Time Camera Center. So a new Motorola AVTAC Scout Council Network with the appropriate components to interface with our existing regional radio network is what's being recommended. The proposed council network would consolidate and accommodate all of our current and future dispatch requirements, including those at the Real-Time Camera Center expansion. So management is requesting that the Operations Committee recommend approval of a contract modification with Motorola Solutions to provide a new AVTAC Scout Council Network Services and Long-Term Sustainment Plan at an amount to exceed, not to exceed, $1.5 million. And I'll try to answer any questions that you may have. This is coming to us through Darren Curry.
Any questions?
Yes, Tom, do you know what, you know what model councils we have now currently?
In terms of the name or the number?
Yes.
I do not know the age of the models or the name. I only know that essentially that it's at the end of its useful life. Darren Curry may be able to answer that, so.
And then also, if he has the I'm sorry.
Darren may be able to provide that by text, so if I can during this meeting, I'll provide you the name.
And then also if, who his point of contact is on this project with Motorola?
I know that there is a great deal of information in the briefing packet, but I don't have that in front of me. I will find that out and get that to you.
Fine, thank you.
Can I jump in here just very briefly to answer a couple of those questions? So the communication is to Mr. Farthing from Mr. Frank, Mr. Farthing being with our organization, a Bi-State employee. His contact is Frank Galvin, okay? And Commissioner, you're going to have to be patient with me because I don't know what this means, but they are 24 AVTAC Scout Councils and associated hardware, and 20 APX single-band Consollets. And in the service contract in reference, there's a great deal of information in here is USC 00047013. I do not know what any of that means, but perhaps you do, Commissioner Simmons.
Yes, yes, thank you. I appreciate it.
You got it.
Also, Commissioner, the current system is from 2013, so it is 10 years old.
Thank you. That clarifies that, thank you.
Any other questions on this contract modification? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
So move.
And a second? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Just wanted to take a moment to recognize Commissioner Moore. Thanks for joining us. The next item it's okay, we try to start on time, so it's challenging if any of us are just a minute or two late, but I'm so glad you're ready.
As you should, as you should. Getting to where people start to stop yourself.
Exactly. The next item is a contract, another contract modification. We seem to have a lot of those today on the CBDR Public Address Customer Information System, some upgrades and security announcements proposal. And again, Tom Curran.
Yes, Commissioner. So this is yet another contract modification, this time to Bi-State's existing contract with Wabtec, Inc., and this is to provide continuing design services to add some functionality to the Real-Time Camera Center, the Public Safety Dispatch, and the MetroLink Operation Control Center. Metro's current SCADA system was developed by Aeronautical Radio, Inc., commonly known as Air Inc., but since that system was developed, Wabtec, Inc. acquired Air Inc.'s Surface Transportation Business in June 2022. That was during the final design phase of the MetroLink Public Address and Customer Information System upgrade that we have now. So Metro would like to add the capability of making live announcements to MetroLink platforms from our Real-Time Camera Center. An additional hardware and software would be necessary to make that a reality. The confidential details of the current Public Address and Customer Information System are the intellectual property of Wabtec. And FTA regulations allow for the award of a sole-source contract for projects that involve confidential details or restricted data rights. Bi-State previously obtained the Board of Commissioners' approval to enter into a sole-source contract with Air Inc. in the not-to-exceed amount of $4.5 million to develop the current system. So Wabtec, the new owner of the former Air Inc. technology, is requesting $141,738 to provide the added capability of making live announcements at the stations. This is just over 3% increase over the original budget, and this cost has been determined to be fair and reasonable by staff. So management is recommending that the Operations Committee recommend approval of a contract modification to Bi-State's existing contract with Wabtec, Inc. for improved functionality for MetroLink's Public Address and Customer Information System in the not-to-exceed amount of $141,738, and an extension of the contract period of performance from June 30 of this year to May 5, 2024. Be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Tom?
How long would it take for the upgrade to be done, Tom?
The time period that's allowed is less than a year. I don't know in those 11 months how quickly they would actually have it up and running, but I will try to find that out from either Darren or a scout's practice, but you know. Thank you.
It is scheduled, excuse me, to be completed within this contract of May 5, 2024, I believe.
Yes, so it's less than a year extension, but it's about 11 months, it looks like.
Tom, I just have one question. There currently is, I thought, capability for public service announcements or public announcements at the stations, because I hear them. So can you sort of describe how different this would be?
So I think this is, I know that there are many announcements that are, that sound to me that they're computer-generated. I think this is more of a live capability for somebody to speak directly as opposed to having it processed through. So like an emergency situation where you really need to communicate with people in live time, I think this would be faster. It'd be a real voice instead of a computer-generated voice.
Well, that's good. Maybe so perhaps people pay closer attention, and it provides more safety.
Yeah, I know that I, you know, you hear that voice, the computer voice, a lot, and I tend to tune it out. So yes, I think this would have more impact. I know that the county also added its functionality to have live voices over its emergency siren system in the county, too. And I really do think that having a real voice and the ability to interact in live time is a benefit.
That's great. It's very helpful. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve?
So move.
And a second?
More seconds?
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The next item is item number eight, the contract award for the electronic fare collection system. And again, Tom Curran is.
Yes, this final contract item agenda for your consideration is a request to authorize a contract with Masabi for creation of an electronic fare collection system. In November, I presented an informational briefing paper to the Board of Commissioners describing the history of our electronic fare collection proposal. In early 2021, an RFP was released for an account-based electronic fare collection system that would work with smart cards, paper barcode tickets, and contactless credit cards. That fare collection RFP also requested a customer-facing web portal, integration with mobile ticketing, and new validators for Metrobus and MetroLink. Ten proposals were received, four finalist firms were interviewed, and Masabi was recommended as a preferred provider for the new system. In order to obtain outside expertise for our fare collection program efforts and an objective review of our electronic fare collection vending procurement process, an independent analysis of that recommendation was conducted by Counsel Hyperion, a consulting firm that was selected through a competitive RFP last summer. And Lauren Sutton from Counsel Hyperion is with us today. Counsel Hyperion's analysis showed that Masabi's proposal met 95% of Bi-State's requirements and was the best choice among the electronic fare collection proposals received. The briefing paper for this request describes the project's history, and it also includes two attachments that summarize the costs from Masabi's proposal. So I'm going to talk briefly about both of those. The Masabi proposal fact sheet illustrates the validators that we would receive for Metrobus and MetroLink. The proposal includes 460 onboard bus validators and 178 platform validators for MetroLink. The final configuration of the MetroLink validators will depend on the type of gates that we select for the SPP program. The pricing breakdown in the fact sheet includes capital expenses for the validators, integrations and configurations, hardware installation, and fare media. So the total upfront cost of the project is in the first column of that fact sheet, and with the credit card payment option, totals $2.17 million. The columns to the right on the fact sheet show the projected expenses for years one through three. Once the system is in place, there would be a $93,500 flat annual maintenance and support expense and licensing fee, plus fees for transactions and payment processing costs. So the second attachment, which is entitled Masabi Operational Cost, shows a more detailed breakdown of the fees for years one to three that appear on the first attachment. So there's a three cent per transaction fee that's planned for CyberSource to serve as our merchant account gateway, which is less than our current four cent per transaction fee under our existing Masabi mobile ticketing pilot, which uses MasterCard gateway payment services. So the majority of the expenses that you see on the Masabi operational cost page are attributed to the fees that would be paid for transactions that are made through the system. So I want to emphasize that these are projections. So they're based on a projection that during the first year of operation of the new system, 25% of the fare transactions would be made through the new electronic fare system, and that that would rise to 60% of fare transactions using the new system by the third year. So these are all projections, and we're basically showing you what is anticipated to be passed through based on the fees from Masabi. And it's a little bit confusing because there are some different percentages for different fees, but the cumulative revenue share from Masabi is 2.34% of the total value of the transactions that would utilize the e-faring system. So the fees to Masabi is 2.34% for the new system. For the three-year contract period, the total estimated cost inclusive of installation, the maintenance and support, and projected transaction fees is $4 million. And again, much of that is the fees that are in years one through three, once it's operational, and these are fees that are simply passing through, assuming there's success of the program. So management is recommending that the Operations Committee accept and forward to the Board of Commissioners for final approval, a three-year contract with Masabi for the provision of an electronic fare collection system and a not-to-exceed amount of $4 million. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Sure, we have questions on this one. Who wants to start?
I'll go last. Anybody else?
I have a couple. First of all, thank you, Mr. Sutton, for being with us, and I don't know if I should direct this question to you or to Tom Curran, but I'm looking at your contact list, hey? And the credit cards that you have that are available for use. Is there a reason that Discover isn't on here?
I'm not sure why Discover would be left off, but it should be included.
Okay, the only reason I ask is because it is really an incredibly popular credit card, and I don't want to leave it off our list, and it's not on there.
Understood. I'll be sure and discuss that with Masabi and be sure that is included.
Okay, thanks. The other question I had is perhaps it's, you're not in this situation, but can you sort of walk us through someone exactly what would happen when a customer would walk up to the fare system and want to either board the train or the bus?
Right. Well, with boarding the train, it's fairly simple. One of the things we're doing is we're working closely with the SPP project to be sure that as they plan for where the turnstile gates are going to go, your new fare gates are going to go, they'll be sure that there is at least one ticket vending machine nearby, that entry point. So customers will be able to find a nearby location, or if they don't have fare media today, that they can go and purchase that and have a simple experience to do so. So I'm actually working in parallel on a separate RFP project to do, to purchase new ticket vending machines that will interact with the Masabi system. It's very important that we work on that quickly because there are plans coming soon for those fare gates to go live. And so we're working to speed that along. The customer will be able to interact with that TVM machine, those ticket vending machines. At every location, we'll be able to accept cash as well as bank cards, and they'll be able to purchase some types of either limited-use media or an extended-use media if they're a regular rider of the system. They will also be able to just load value onto what we call a travel wallet. Where customers, if they're going to ride for a certain time period, but it may not be a full month or anything, can just put a certain value on there. You have the option to do what's called a contactless CMV, where the customer could actually skip that ticket vending machine and ride ticketless. They can just tap directly on the turnstile with their bank card and purchase right there without having to wait in line, without having to decide how much money do I need to put on this card and convert to transit currency. And those projects, while relatively new in the U.S., have been a big boom for many agencies. I've been a part of those projects in Dallas, New York, and currently rolling that out in Philadelphia. And there's a lot of excitement about that project because it's confusing to have to walk up to a TVM machine. If I don't know the system, if I don't know the fare cost and things, that can be a barrier to people riding. So we're really excited, and Tom, I know, is sharing my enthusiasm for the EMV projects there and the capability there to give a more seamless rider experience. But what's important here is that all of your riders are going to have some form of electronic media. There has to be some way to tap to that validator to get through. So all of a sudden, this means that none of your riders are invisible anymore. We're going to know where your riders are riding, and by what we hope is a round trip, we can understand where they're getting off and have better planning information for your riders. So there are so many benefits to going into an electronic system and pushing more riders that direction. I think the agency is really going to benefit from that, and thus your riders are going to benefit from that as well. Does that answer your question?
It does, and I'm assuming that if people have a smartphone, they can tap their smartphone?
That is correct. So the mobile, the validator will also include a barcode reader that they will be able to activate their barcode on the mobile ticket, tap that against the device, and turnstile will allow them to come through.
That's great. Thank you so much for the semi-visual demonstration.
Certainly, certainly indeed.
That's on my questions. Herb, do you have some?
Yeah, I want to address each to Mr. Roach, if possible. Tommy, as you know, we've had this discussion in the past, and I just need to know what your confidence level is on the difference between this and on the failed system from before, where there was quite a bit of funds that was spent. So I know you and Tom and I had discussed that in the past. So I just need to hear, and I think the rest of the commissioners would like to know. I'm sure some of the same features was probably addressed in the last issue, and I just want to make sure that we're not going to fall and fail once again on this.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. So this is a 180-degree difference from what we were, what the agency contemplated many, many years ago in a smart card-based system. The technology is vastly, vastly different. And this is very much in parallel with the kind of systems that we are seeing across the country. But to reassure the commissioners, may recall several months ago, you asked us to kind of take an extra look at this. Indeed, that's exactly what Mr. Sutton's role is here in analyzing and, for instance, reviewing our process. You heard, for instance, in Tom's presentation that we had nine presenters. Masabi was scored as the highest. Then we took the extra step at the request of this board to ask Mr. Sutton and his team to analyze our process, to be sure that it is current, that it is in line with parallel processes across the country, and so that we don't make that mistake, that we don't just pick essentially one horse. I would like to say that within these systems, there is more flexibility associated with using software as a service or so on. We can use different gate manufacturers. We can use different, for instance, Commissioner Winmiller's question about several different payment types, whether it be MasterCard, Discover, et cetera. All of those will be available in this platform, and I think one of the big keys is that this type of system, A, is common and is where the industry is moving, but B, it is embedded within it is some flexibility. But B, it is embedded within it is some flexibility. So that if there is a, a, a failure in one part, we have other avenues to go. Um, and I, I think that, um, this will most importantly introduce the system to, um, uh, to even the casual rider who is, for instance, overwhelmed by our fair media. I, I cannot, um, I cannot go by without the, uh, experience of my son, who unfortunately was raised by me and therefore raised on accessing transit systems. But he, he uses this exact thing when he doesn't know what to do on CTA. He takes his phone and just, and just flies it over the, the gates and the gates open. He doesn't even know how much he spent on that ticket. By the way, that's the most expensive ticket. Uh, the CTA gets the best revenue when that activity happens. Um, so there's other options for our more experienced riders to do, um, to, for instance, ha, uh, for us to contemplate, for instance, areas of fair capping, um, so that our regular riders can, can experience the system and not, uh, be paying their disproportionate share. Again, a, a, a point towards the flexibility of the system. So I am, I'm, I am bolstered by, uh, by the team's, uh, really vigilant look at this. Um, uh, and also happy, as a matter of fact, that that the board asked us to pause and be sure that we are moving ahead on a, on a basis that made sense. Uh, because we have to learn from our mistakes. Um, uh, Commissioner, that's one of the things that you mentioned, um, publicly when you asked us to look at this for some extra time, and I believe we've done that. And, um, I, uh, very humbly ask for your endorsement of this, um, but of course, happy to provide any more detailed information.
Well, thank you, and I want to thank you and Tom because I know, uh, uh, yous have done a lot of work and the staff has on it, and, uh, I, I'm, I'm satisfied with the, uh, response that Tom provided me a few weeks back and what you just, uh, relayed. So, uh, given that fact, I'm going to, uh, go with your recommendation. I will be supporting this project.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions? I, I'm sorry, I just have one more. I forgot to ask this, and it's how are we going to deal with large customers currently have contracts?
So the U-Pass situation, I'm sorry, go ahead, Toby.
Good. Go ahead, Tom. Why don't you take that, please?
So we, this will necessarily involve changes to, um, the existing system in terms of the types of passes that we distribute because the optical scanner must be able to read whatever we, uh, program it to read. And so I did have conversations, uh, with Ted Zimmerman in marketing and communications about having meetings with the universities and the other large users to find out what would best suit your needs. Uh, this is a flexible system, and we want to do what works for, best for you uh, in terms of the product and what your, for example, Washington University staff and students would prefer. Uh, some places around the country have gone with, uh, just using the phone and the e-tickets, even for students. Others, uh, prefer ID badges and things of that nature. So all of those conversations still need to be had. The idea here is just to get the electronic fare system decision in place that will allow us to move forward on a lot of other fronts.
That's great. Thank you so much because that's, um, university students and staff and faculty, and also just large consumers are going to be a important part of this as well as individuals. So I'm glad we're taking that into account, and there's flexibility in the system. So.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Really appreciate all the work on this. I think it's come along very well. Any other questions? May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you so much. That concludes, uh, uh, the, the, oh, the, um, items one through eight, which includes most of our, um, uh, operations pieces. Do we have any unscheduled business?
Uh, Commissioner, we can move right to Mr. Stewart.
Great.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Now, in your packets, our performance summary for the first six months of, of this fiscal year, as well as our workforce update for December, uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, good news is that our ridership continues to improve. Uh, year to date, we are, uh, bus ridership is five point two percent over last year. MetroLink seven percent over last year. And Colorado, we're still having some difficulties with, uh, and I'll talk more about that later, but we continue to have problems with Colorado and their ridership is down uh, primarily because of our availability of staff in order to service, um, our Colorado riders. Um, just want to highlight a few things for you. Um, again, our challenge continues to be our staffing. Our bus, uh, operators were down to over two hundred bus operators, uh, eighteen MetroLink operators, seventy-nine Colorado operators, forty-four mechanics and fourteen electricians. And this is having an impact on our service delivery. Uh, in our workforce update report, we're showing that, uh, Metro Bus missed, uh, over twenty-five hundred trips in December, uh, primarily again due to our workforce shortage. This is a total of two point five percent of our total trips. But actually, it's an improvement since, from November, uh, where we had a six point one percent um, percentage on missed trips. Uh, what, uh, we did have a service change, uh, in November, uh, that included a seven percent reduction in, uh, bus service in Missouri. Uh, we are doing these service changes primarily in order to match the resources that we have available um, with the ability to perform the services or provide service to our customers. So it's, we're just trying to right-size our, our system right now. And, um, we will continue to do that. We are planning another service change for March and basically not so much a reduction, uh, in service, but better timing of service to improve our connections between MetroLink and Bus. So more about that in the future. Uh, MetroLink had two missed trips in December, which is really, 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 uh, rare, but they were both on Christmas Day, unfortunately. Uh, so hopefully not a lot of, of riders were impacted. I hope they were with their families enjoying their holiday. Uh, Colorado, we had sixteen thousand denied boardings of the forty-six thousand trips that were requested. Uh, thirty-five percent of total trips were denied. We're looking at Colorado, we're looking at that service. Uh, Colorado has just expanded and expanded over the years. We are well out of the, the polygon that we should be operating in. A lot of these denials are, are frankly, um, requests from people that are not ADA certified and have gotten used to the convenience and availability of Colorado. We need to pull that back a little bit. And we're working on that. We'll do some of that with the March service change. But we will certainly continue to provide service to our most, um, needy customers in that area. So we're trying to figure out how we pull things back, but at the same time, um, continue to provide the required service. Uh, my recruiting pipeline numbers, although it says November is actually December, are not looking real good for, for, or they didn't look good for December, but they are improving. Uh, we are, we continue to make an effort to, to attract, uh, new, um, new operators, new mechanics, uh, new team members in general. Uh, numbers are up for, for January thus far. We do have, uh, seven operators in training now, four, uh, Colorado operators and four mechanics. So we're, um, it's, that it continues to be a challenge for us, but I think the, the market is changing. I think that, uh, we have opportunities coming toward us and we are preparing for that. We have totally revitalized our, our training efforts. Uh, we were losing a number of, of new prospects during the training process. We're trying to fix that. We're giving them, um, uh, mentors. We're, we're having them pair up with people so that we can successfully uh, navigate them through the process and get them, um, out on the streets operating our vehicles. Uh, in addition, um, as you know, we are in negotiations. We successfully negotiated the contract with IBW. We are continuing to work with Local Seven Eighty-Eight. Uh, we are making considerable progress in our, in my opinion. Uh, again, our objective is to attract and retain. Uh, we had, uh, sessions, uh, open forums with our, with our team, with our operators, with our mechanics. And they basically told us that, you know, they want something, not only do they want a, a fair and equitable overall wage. Uh, they want to improve their quality of life. Um, which means that, uh, so we're looking at new ways to, to schedule work, to give them an opportunity um, to not have to work all the time, but work, uh, at the times we need them. And as a result of that, we are offering incentives uh, for people to, to work the times that we need them to work. Uh, we're offering differentials, uh, in order to accomplish that also. We are designating priority routes so that additional compensation is provided for those routes that we must get out in order to serve our customers. Uh, we are committed to this partnership. And, um, as we move forward, I think that we will be successful in this negotiation and reach the objectives of both sides. So I look forward to that partnership as we go forward. So that's, um, that is my report, uh, for today, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Stewart?
Just have a curious question, if I may, Chairman Windmiller.
Of course.
Mr. Stewart, uh, I, I don't envy you at all in, uh, your task and what you are required to accomplish. But I just, I wonder when, when calls are missed or when trips are missed, particularly those caller rides, how we communicate to the customers? I'm just, just curious.
Oh, yeah. We, we have a very, um, rigorous, uh, process of making sure that riders know if their ride is not coming. Uh, we have, uh, in fact, last week we had a situation, um, in a one or two day situation where things kind of just got out of control. Uh, we have reorganized our, uh, transit team. Uh, we're trying to make it one transit team where if you need help over here, then we're going to bring help from over there. We quickly were able to get, um, like fourteen bus TSMs that came to the rescue in terms of making calls and that type of thing. So we are very, very, um, considerate of our customer needs and communication with them. Of course, our, um, our marketing and communication team is always sending out, uh, information as to what the status of, status of our system is. So we, we are, we're, we're committed to making sure that people know that if we're not going to be there, um, and try as much as we can to give them alternatives for that service.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? I, I just wanted to say thank you so much, um, Chuck, for the work that you and your team, particularly the operators are doing. I know how challenging this environment is. And I, I know you're doing everything possible, not only to take care of the employees that we have and to attract and retain new employees, but also to do this while providing the highest level of service. And I, I'm very grateful um, to you and to your team. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any, any other information that you need to impart or any questions from the board? Hearing none, I think we can move on and ask Talby for his CEO report.
Very good. Thank you. Good morning. So just very briefly, so, uh, I want to thank Chuck and his negotiating team. As he mentioned, not only we're, we're successful with the IBW contract, but let me tell you, uh, and I also want to thank the negotiating team for Seven Eighty-Eight. Look, I know, uh, I want the commissioners to understand that there are hours being spent on that contract. I know both of those teams are working very, very hard at securing that contractual relationship. And that is the fundamental base of what we do. We need those great union employees and we need that contract. And I know both teams have been working very, very hard on long days trying to get this done. I am very hopeful, uh, very grateful to both teams, including the Seven Eighty-Eight negotiating team and of course Chuck Stewart and his team at the hard work they're doing. Commissioners, I, I think we're, I'm, I'm hoping that we're close. Um, that's our goal. Um, so, uh, please, uh, recognize their, their hard work. But also in the good news front, I, I cer- certainly need to mention there's a lot of really good investments going into transit. Uh, in particular in Illinois right now, we have to highlight, uh, my gosh, is, uh, we had a great groundbreaking in Emerson Park associated with, uh, St. Clair County making, uh, in conjunction with our partners, the State of Illinois, a thirteen million dollar investment on a fabulous facility that will include nine-one-one, OCC two, Operations Control Center for, um, for, uh, MetroLink. And of course, the sheriffs will be there too. And you know, what that means is the difference will be to our riders. I want to thank, uh, both the State of Illinois and of course St. Clair County Transit District for their continued vigilance and, and investments in our riders. But also I know they're working very hard on the extension out to Mid-America Airport. Uh, word is that's going well. You know, what a great partner the St. Clair County Transit District is and the State of Illinois in making those investments. Now, those are happening right now. Now we're moving over to the Missouri side. We continue to make a lot of progress. I will be in Washington DC in March, working on the funding for North Side, South Side MetroLink expansion through the Jefferson Alignment. Uh, Commissioners, that's moving well. Um, word in Washington is very favorable about the, about the potential for funding, uh, through a new starts application. The goal is to e- enter into project development in the, in summer of this year. Um, and, uh, I'm very hopeful on that application. But also at the same time, the county is moving forward on their alternatives analysis for North County MetroLink. Um, the county is engaged. Staff is engaged in looking at that. Uh, we haven't had that before. Um, and that's certainly good news when it comes to, uh, expansion of the transit system. Uh, uh, obviously shown right now with dirt moving in St. Clair County and hopefully now, although we're just moving ink around in Missouri, it still is progress. So I just want you all to be aware of that. I will be presenting kind of a more detailed, um, explanation of some of these as the future of transit at, at our, at my transit talk with Citizens for Modern Transit, coming up here on February the first. I invite everybody to go to that. Um, should be, uh, a, a fun presentation where we're talking about the future of our great region. I want to thank everybody for their endorsements. Uh, we are moving ahead at Bi-State. We're moving ahead only with the investments that, that this board of commissioners make in us, and I want to thank you for that.
Thanks, Talby. Any questions? Comments? Uh, Myra, can you tell us when the future meetings are, please?
Yes, the next Board of Commissioners meeting is scheduled for Friday, February seventeenth. The next Safety and Security Committee meeting will be held on March third. And the next Operations Committee meeting and the Audit, Finance and Administration Committee will be meeting on March seventeenth. All of the meetings will be held at eight thirty AM.
Great. Thank you so much. There's no further work or, uh, I would ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The, the next meeting, of course, is the, the Finance and Audit Committee, so hopefully we'll be starting that soon as well. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
We're ready to begin, Commissioner Beach, thank you.
Thank you. I'll call the Finance, Administration, Audit Committee, AFA, together. Myra, will you please call the role?
Commissioner Beach.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Postello. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Gladney. Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Windmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Cox. Commissioner Golladay. Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
You may proceed.
Were there any comment cards, Myra?
No, no comment cards were submitted for today's meeting.
Thank you, we'll move to item four, the approval of the October fourteenth minutes of this committee. Is there a motion to approve?
More.
We have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Approved. Item five, the ByState Development Operating Capital Budget, Tammy Fulbright?
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm going to share my screen. Are you guys able to see my screen?
No.
Yeah.
A bit of a lag this morning.
I'm sorry. Are you able to see it now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, okay. So let me get into... Okay, so this is the 2024 Operating Budget and the Capital Budget. We're going to present the twenty-four, twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six budget. This first screen, Talby, this is his favorite screen, so I'll let him begin with this slide.
Thank you, Tammy. So, so what's most important is of course our march, not from a twelve month basis, but in a, in a region and developing transit and other assets, which most important is that you have a, a budget that reflects a trend. And of course, one of, the reason why this is my favorite is that we are down there in the green. Because where we were on projections, as you see, prior to, of course, the FY twenty nineteen mark there by the blue box, since that time, we have been adhering to a much more rigorous financial discipline, and we will continue to do so with this budget. Of course, this is key to be sure that how we are developing our transit assets and operating our transit assets, that they are in line with the discipline of our funders. And our funders are, are of course looking at our budgets every single year. I will go in front of all three of them and with staffs and present this budget, and I'm proud to do so every single year. But most importantly, they have to be in line with where our revenue projections go. And obviously, what we need to do, it's pretty simple math, ladies and gentlemen, to be sure that our rate of growth, as far as transit assets and operating is concerned, is below what our rate of growth is from our sales tax. So most importantly, if we stick to that growth rate, obviously, what we are showing on a five-year average is a growth rate of 1.11%. I am personally very proud of that, but mostly proud of staff's work to make this happen every single day. Tammy?
Yes, and I, I want to add a little bit about fiscal responsibility on this screen too. We couldn't get to this five-year average annual growth rate without the help of everybody within this organization to get to that 1.11%. I've had the opportunity to be out, not near enough to talk to people, and their understanding. And fiscal responsibility is a belief, and they do believe in it, they've accomplished it. Anywhere from when we couldn't find parts or they were too expensive, they found ways to create them themselves. And even with the man hours, they still saved money. So we have an organization that truly does believe in fiscal responsibility and is working hard towards that. And that's how we've been able to get to this 1.11%. So transitioning into this next slide for transit, I just kind of want to walk you through the revenue and expenses here. As you can see, we increased revenue, by passenger revenue by 3.5 million dollars. This is actually about a $2 million increase from where we actually ended the year in 2022. So this is a, a great change from what we've been able to present over the last couple of years, to see some movement there. And what we're seeing a lot of that growth is in the university contracts. As far as the grant, sales, tax and contractual revenue, I just kind of want to break that out a little bit. That is made up of about 207 million dollars in sales tax, 1.6 million in state funding, 61 million in contract revenue, and about 28 million in federal income. And our interest income is also up by about 3.8 million, primarily due to the Fed rate increases. And then as you see, others down slightly, and that's just due to some of our ATS contract revenue that we earn there. So looking at expenses for wages, as you can see, we're down about 9.5 million, primarily due to the worker shortages. Services are up about 10.6 million, and that includes about 7.5 million in alternative mobility, about 500,000 in additional maintenance contracts and 200,000 in custodial contracts, which is primarily due to COVID, the additional requirements that we have that are pretty, pretty much here to stay. And then another 600,000 in consultant fees. For fuel, we're up about 400,000, and that's primarily due to gasoline, so we're going to be looking at that. We do huge hedging for our diesel fuel, but we're going to also look at doing some of that for gasoline going forward. And parts and supplies, that's mainly due to non-revenue vehicle, where you see the increase of about 900,000. We're down about 725 on casualty and insurance. Utilities are up about 500,000, mainly due to electricity propulsion. And on other expenses, the 1.9 is primarily related to training. So as we were in the pandemic, there wasn't a lot of those opportunities. And so we're working really on our development of our employees. So that leaves us with an income before depreciation of a negative 1.1 million, which will primarily be fun, it's, it's non-cash related to pension. So as we move on into the arch and looking at it there, you can see that we are up on arch ticket sales by 1.1 million. We increased our price in 2022 in January. We also, we al, oh, I'm sorry, this is actually about 625,000 passengers. So what we're reaching is a little bit better than our pre-pandemic revenue, which is really good news. And with that increase in revenue, we're only seeing a 3% increase in expense to offset that. So that leaves us with net income before depreciation of 1.2 million. Moving on to the riverboats, we also see there that we have about a $300,000 increase on cruises. So that's about 144, or 134,000 in passengers. And overall, their expenses are only growing at 4.5%. So they are also showing income of 260,000. Then moving on into the airport, when you look at the airport, they're up by about 260,000 in revenue. And again, expense is only growing at 8.7%, leaving us with income of 272,000. For freightway, we're showing a loss of 100,000, but we are working on that and working with the local community to try to bring that to a break even. So we are looking into that, but for right now, we're showing that with a loss of 100,000. For executive services, you can see, this is, this is enterprise within our agency that really focuses on our internal audit department, legal, this is where those expenses hit. And the offsets are our fees for administrative and also our fees that we get in for the arch and then from the National Park Service. So that leaves us with income of 8.6 million. And I'll quickly go through the internal service funds for the health. You can see that our claims will be up about 2.3 million. I'm sorry, we're reducing by about 2.3 million. For casualty, we show a reduction of 1.1 million in claims paid. And for workers' compensation, we show that we're up about a half a million. And moving on into the capital projects, so we have about 716.5 million in capital projects for the next three years. Federal funding is, 80% of that is funded by federal funding of 570.5 million and local funding of 146 million. This federal source of capital is broken down by all of these different categories and different grant types, primarily formula, formula funding, which is the most available funding. It's based on a formula, but it also gives us the availability to use these funds in more, more needs to use it, and it's of 246.2 million. And the state of good repair is of 213.2 million. So our local sources of capital are about 146 million, and those are mainly funded between St. Louis and Illinois. So a sales tax of 104.4 million, and with St. Clair County of 27.3 million. And then these are showing the different categories that those funds will be spending, spent in. Primarily, the biggest ones, vehicle and supporting equipment of 215.6 million and future rail projects of 185 million, with the additional infrastructure, vehicle maintenance and rehab programs of 164.6 million. And then this breakdown just breaks down the expenditures a little bit more so that you can see the breakdown of whether we're using it for facilities or different projects or LRVs or we're looking at that project this year too, and also in preventative maintenance. So for the riverboats, the capital budget there, we have Coast Guard mandated dry dock inspection of 500,000 that will be funded with riverboat cash that we currently have. And then for the St. Louis Downtown Airport, the big projects there are listed below, mainly the terminal and the runway, and that's over the next three years. So today, we're asking for a recommendation from the committee to, for board approval for the FY twenty-four operating budget, the twenty-four to twenty-six capital budget, our three-year transportation improvement plan, and then for grant resolutions to apply for federal and state funding that support our programs. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, are there any questions? I'm sure there will be. Very thorough. Questions or comments? Hearing none, we need a motion to approve, and this will go to the full board.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 You opposed? The ayes have it, thank you, Tammy, very thorough. Item six, contract approval compensation study, Diana Benz will comment.
Good morning, Commissioners. Per board policy, in order to attract and retain talent, we are to annually review compensation. In addition to that, the formal compensation review every three years utilizing outside professional services. Our last formal review was conducted in 2020, and we are proposing a new approach to the compensation review in 2023. And we're proposing this for the following reasons. Employee relations and employee retention, we know is key as a focus to ByState development, especially during the current workforce shortage and talent environment. In addition to that, the current talent market, as we know, is dynamic and has created an environment in which salary expectations have grown substantially in the marketplace. In parallel with other initiatives, including those approved by the board in 2022, we have had positive movement related to our represented contracts. And with those things combined, we really must continue to review and modernize our employment offerings in order to stay competitive. This is an important step in attracting and retaining the talent we need for today and in the future. As we all know, talent is really critical to our success. So the approach we're proposing is a more robust compensation review than processes we've used previously. It's called Multiple Ranking Technology, or MRT, and comes through an organization, John H. Burnett and Associates. This is a unique service which utilizes custom software. So we are making this a sole source request versus issuing an open solicitation. What differentiates John H. Burnett's and Associates from other firms includes a process that combines external market data with internal knowledge of by-state positions. Usually, these compensation reviews are one or the other, and this combines the approaches. It's also a very inclusive approach that is management-driven versus consultant-driven, and I think that's one of the key differentiators. It's a process that's designed to reduce bias and subjectivity through a ranking system and unique technology. And it also links compensation to what's valued in the organization and to business strategy. The fee for this service is estimated to be between 195 to 208,000. This will depend on fluctuation with positions that would be included in the process. The fee includes consulting, materials development, quality control checks and project coordination. And the deliverables for this project include composite ranking solutions, a job value hierarchy, a market adjustment table showing relative market benchmarks, a proposed new grade structure, a review of and edits to employee communications throughout the project. Additionally, the consultants will work with staff to ensure that we have a process in place to maintain the new salary structure and job value hierarchy until we're able to do the next compensation study. As a result, we anticipate saving approximately 60,000 dollars per year. So my request today is for the Audit, Finance and Administration Committee to recommend moving this forward to the Board of Commissioners for approval. This request involves authorizing the President and CEO to approve the statement of work and contract with John H. Burnett and Associates. The project would begin upon approval and would end in approximately 90 days. What questions do you have?
Any questions, comments?
Just one question, in your introduction, if I may, Chairman Beach, in your introduction, you indicated the frequency with which this should occur. Could you hit that again? It was not annually, I didn't believe, but what, what was that frequency?
Yes, Commissioner Moore, we internally, we are required to annually review our compensation processes, but to have this formal review, it's every three years according to board policy. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we need a motion to approve, please.
More moves?
Second.
Motion to approve with a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed, approved, thank you so much. Crystal Mesner is now up for item seven, Internal Audit Follow-Up Summary, Second Quarter of Fiscal Year Twenty-Three. We're going to also have her take item eight and nine, Internal Audit Status Report, Second Quarter Fiscal Year Twenty-Three, and the Internal Audit SSL Status Report for the fourth, fourth quarter calendar year of last year. Crystal, you're up.
Thank you. Chair Beach, and good morning, Commissioners. And just keeping with the spirit of our last meetings, Commissioner Beach took it right out of my mouth just to continue on with these. These are just updates, our follow-ups for second quarter of fiscal year twenty-three. There's no past due, we're still on target there. As a matter of fact, we call, we closed 37% last quarter, so that's phenomenal. And that's really the reflection of management, really getting those correct, corrective actions in and implement it timely. For item number eight, which is Internal Audit Status Report for Second Quarter Fiscal Year Twenty-Three, we just had a little fluctuation in our audits, we just moved some things around. Our audit plans are, they're alive, we need to move as things move. So we actually put the arch and riverboat ticket sales audit on a brief hold to allow us to assist some special projects. on a brief hold to allow us to assist some special projects. One of those is Metro Pass Unit and another one was Metro Bus Payroll Code. And for agenda item number nine, that is our internal audit state safety oversight S A S report, and this is concluding our calendar year, um because that's on the calendar year basis for two thousand and twenty-two. Um everything for the year actually went on schedule. Um we were able to conduct all of our audits and build work, get our audit reports out um and get those over to our by-state safety oversight. Um and that came out to result in about twelve findings, which we're working with Metro League, Metro Bus and other management to get those cap corrective action plans in place and approved uh with our by-state safety oversight. Um also in addition, now we have the opportunity to be able to conduct S S O audits for our loop trolley system. Uh we did some reviews of that um for this year before pre-operation and after operation. Um that was concluded in October of two thousand and twenty-two. And we presented our two thousand and twenty-two annual state safety and security oversight review and certification for the loop trolley. We presented that to the Saint Louis Trolley Transportation Development District Board on December the sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-two, which was approved and moved forward to our MoDOT S S O uh oversight. So that concludes my updates. If anyone has any questions, I'm available.
Any questions, comments?
That's for
Comment, Chairman Beach?
Yes, Tommy.
Yes, um um the chief audit executive men- mentioned how uh her team is has been moving some of these audits around. Uh this kind of spirit of commu- of cooperation is if I can just commend Crystal and her team for doing so, it helps us target what we need to work on. Uh quite frankly, sometimes the timing of those are important and we need some adjustments. And her team has worked very hard with management to do so. So I just want to mention a word of appreciation of Crystal and her staff in doing that, that just helps us get better.
I agree, thank you.
Chairman Beach, if I may, I just have one one quick question, Crystal. You mentioned one area uh that there were twelve findings, uh I can't remember which area you said. Uh does that seem high or is that indicative of some larger issue that you've been working on or you're aware of or trying to mitigate uh whatever it is that's causing these findings?
Those S S R, I believe.
Yeah, that's our state safety oversight, um internal audit reviews. Um those are very large audits, that's part of our trainee cycle um that gets reported up to our by-state safety oversight and then gets reported up to F D A. Um one of the reasons probably for the larger number is more of the documentation relation to things. Um and I don't want to go into great detail um in open session um about, you know, the specifics, however, um I don't think they're indicative of like some large issue. It's more like we try to be very specific in these types of corrective actions. Um and we try to break them down by, uh I guess would be the best way to say it is in accomplishable. Um so sometimes it may be a finding that is really like intuitive of two or three different things, but we need to do it in four different steps, so maybe we break it up to four different caps. So we call them corrective action plans. Um but really, it's it's not that in essence, overall, we were actually um really encouraged that management and staff are doing the compliance activities. Um and we just had a lot of deficiencies in documentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chairman Beach, those twelve that they're discussing, I know you're aware of them. Uh and there's no red flags from you, I'm sure if there was, you'd be letting us know, am I correct?
Yes.
Thank you, appreciate the jab you do.
Any other questions, comments? We'll move forward to item um Tammy Dave Tobin, the pension valuations update.
Yes, thank you, and good morning commissioners. So annually, um at the close of the pension plan year, we engage Milliman to do an actuarial valuation of our pension plans. And so today I'm just going to present briefly an informational update on the outcome of those valuations. Um I am happy to report that all three plans actually had improved funded ratios. So I'll talk first about the salary plan. We had uh a funded ratio of eighty-eight point nine percent, which is an improvement of five point six percent despite the market um conditions. The number of participants in that plan, which it is a closed plan, are at seven hundred and forty-two. And um the assumed rate of return that the actuaries use is six percent. Um unfortunately, in two thousand and twenty-two, as we know, the market was quite turbulent. Um so the portfolio actually saw a loss of six point nine percent in this valuation period. Um however, in two thousand and twenty-one, the actual investment return was twenty-nine point eight percent. So um we feel that the um salary pension plan is is in good standing, basically. Uh the second plan I'd like to talk about is the I B W plan. Its funded ratio is at eighty-eight percent, that's an improvement of two point five percent from the prior uh plan valuation. They have seventy-two participants in this plan, it is also a closed plan. Um its rate of return uh it is, the target is also six percent. Um and it um it is um also in good standing, so we're not having any concerns there. The third plan is the A T U seven eighty-eight plan. Now, this is um both for the clerical and the operations and maintenance teams. Um we saw a funded ratio of seventy-four point eight percent, that was an improvement of actually four point two percent um from the prior valuation. In this plan, which is still an open plan, so it does have new participants coming in, um the total number of participants um as of its plan anniversary of April one, two thousand and twenty-two was twenty-seven hundred and fourteen. Um and right now, its rate of return is targeted at six point five percent. Clearly, we're not making that based upon the current market conditions. Um and in this plan, there was a recommended um contribution rate of a hundred and fifty-nine oh seven. Now, the trustees of this plan have for several years been funding at a higher rate. So they're actually funding at a hundred and seventy-five dollars um per uh payroll cycle. So essentially, they're trying to improve the funded ratio by uh contributing more than what is required according to the actuarial valuation. And one thing I'll also mention, kind of going back to the I B W plan, um at one point, it was fully funded um because it is a closed plan and there are so few participants, but of course, market conditions will allow it to fluctuate. Its actual required contribution rate did increase a little bit um based upon this recent valuation. And that committee back in November did choose to increase the actual contribution um to a hundred and forty-five twenty-nine per week, up slightly from a hundred and forty-three fourteen. So we did make a change there to help with the overall improved um funding for that I B W plan. Um at this juncture, we don't really have any um overall concerns based upon the valuations. Um we are headed into our uh quarterly review with CAP Trust, who are our investment advisors. Uh so those meetings happen um next week. And so the pension plan trustees will be receiving an update from CAP Trust on the overall portfolio performance. And we do report on that um every six months to the board as well. So with that, I will stop and entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you. And uh just to clarify, these are defined benefit programs, correct, plans?
Yes, yes, they are defined benefit programs.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you, that's information only, we will move forward to uh Tammy Forbright is back for the Treasury Report, item eleven.
Thank you. Um so for, I'll give a brief update. Um at September thirtieth, our by-state directed funds were two hundred and ninety-three million with an average rate of return of two and a half percent. Our by-state trustee-directed funds were fifty-five million with an average rate of return of two point two percent. So we're currently working to continue building on our three-year ladder portfolio. We did buy some treasury bills and government agencies and that average yield was three and a half percent. And just a quick update on the fuel hedge through September thirtieth, our realized gains are three point five million. Um we right-size the number of contracts to allow us to align with our actual needs um as it relates to what we're um what we're using. And so that's why you're seeing that gain of three and a half million. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, moving right along, uh item twelve, Crystal Mesner, the Quarterly Treasury Safekeeping Accounts Audit ending September thirtieth of last year.
Uh thank you, Chair Beach. Yeah, our review of um the Quarterly Treasury Safekeeping for September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two that Tammy just presented, um we are in the consideration that everything was presented fairly. Um there was a small little reportable value of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And it was really a transposition in numbers in a report, um which will actually uh correct itself in the following quarter.
And I I just want to mention that isn't a report issue, no money is missing or anything, it's just based on a report.
Yeah, so there was a just a hundred and eighty thousand dollars um more on the bank statements because we actually go back and we look at a due thorough review of the bank statements and credit reviews and things of that nature of the treasurer's report every quarter, that's what we were here to do. Um and the fuel hedge report um most definitely was presented fairly and we didn't find any any problems or complications with that. Um available for any questions, if anyone has any.
Questions, comments? Thank you. Uh next item, financial statements, Tammy, item thirteen.
Thank you again. Um so I'm gonna run through these, so I want to talk uh mainly about net income before depreciation. And so for executive services, our year-to-date income was three hundred and forty-four thousand. This was a hundred and six thousand more than budget and it's really that um probably timing due to services and expenses there. For the gateway arch, year-to-date income was nine hundred and ten thousand and this is five hundred and forty-one K more than budget. Um the ridership increased over the summer months and our train capacity increased from twenty-five to thirty riders per trip. And our available hours also increased, so that's really um causing the uptick that we're seeing there. For the riverfront attractions, year-to-date income was eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, this was ninety-seven thousand more than budget. Passengers for Q one were sixty-two thousand and this is the highest since two thousand and nineteen for the same period. Um for the airport, we're seeing a year-to-date loss of forty-nine thousand. Revenues were up twenty-nine or twenty-seven thousand or five point six percent, but services are up due to casualty and liability costs. Uh for transit, year-to-date income is twelve point eight million. This is up nine point seven million compared to budget. Revenues were up one million and salaries and benefits were down three point four million due to worker shortages. Services are also down about two point three million due to timing. Um we're seeing about one million down in fuel and that's really related to the alignment of the fuel hedge program. Um for freightway, we're seeing year-to-date revenues and expenses, they're aligned with budget. And so that's my report this morning, if there's any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Next two items will up together. Tommy, I believe you don't have a reporter other than to announce a hiring event tomorrow?
Yes, thank you. Uh so that is at our central facility from ten to two tomorrow. We are hiring, we are holding this event regularly. And look, we have great jobs at Metro Transit and of course at the Arch and at at the airport. So please come by uh or please reference anyone who'd be interested in in working at our great organization. Thank you, Terry.
And I assume that you pushed that information out on social media?
Yes, sir, I'll have the team forward some uh stuff to all of you. And we would appreciate you forwarding it to your many uh followers.
Thank you. Mara, future upcoming board and committee meeting.
Chair, I believe we skipped item number fourteen, procurement report.
Oh, Tom, how could I forget you? Sorry. Item fourteen, Tom, procurement report.
Thank you, Chair Beach, I'll keep this short. So I'm presenting for informational purposes, a quarterly uh procurement activity report included in your packet. Uh the first page of the report with the colored bar charts is the non-competitive procurement trend. So for the second quarter of fiscal year twenty-three, non-competitive procurement totaled four and a half million dollars or at eleven point five percent of the total purchase order commitment volume of thirty-nine point four million. This is a significant decline from the first quarter of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, when non-competitive spending had reached forty-two and a half percent of the total. And this marks a return to normal spending levels. On the second page, the procurement activity report for the second quarter of two thousand and twenty-three shows that there were three thousand three hundred and sixty-six transactions made using procurement cards with a total value of one point four two million dollars. The average cost for the procurement card purchases during the past quarter was four hundred and twenty-two dollars. There was one procedural violation for a procurement car transaction. That was a violation of a split payment that exceeded the credit limit that an employee had made in an attempt to cover a delinquent bill to avoid a collection penalty, uh but it was still a violation of policy. The third page shows all the contract awards over one hundred thousand dollars for the second quarter of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. The largest of these contracts was the emergency replacement of the Devolver Signal House, which was damaged in the July flood. And then the final two pages list all the contract modifications for the second quarter. And most of these involve the exercise of option years for existing contracts. Uh and Mr. Chairman, one last note. Um Masabi has sent a message to me during this meeting indicating that Discover cards are a part of the system, so sorry for that omission. And I've indicated the same to Chair, to Commissioner Wyndham, thank you.
Any questions for Tom? I apologize, missing that on the agenda. Thank you. Uh now, Myra, future dates.
Um yes, the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, February seventeenth. The next Safety and Security Committee meeting will be held on Friday, March third. The next Operations Committee meeting, as well as the Audit, Finance and Administration Committee meeting, will be held on Friday, March seventeenth, with all meetings beginning at eight thirty.
Thank you. We have an executive session planned, however, for item eighteen, the only i- item for consideration in executive session agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the October fourteenth A F A Committee. Executive session meeting, if there are no corrections to these minutes and there are no discussion needed to these minutes, the committee could proceed to a vote now without going into executive session. So uh I would, unless there are any questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the October fourteenth A F A Committee Executive Session as presented as a closed record.
So move.
Move, second, I second.
Uh roll call, are we need a roll call or just a voice vote?
We will need a roll call for this one. Uh Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
And Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
The motion passed.
And I believe that's all we have. Uh if there's no other comments or further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
So move.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all have a great weekend.
You too.
Yeah.
You.
Thank you, commissioners, thank you everybody.
You have a fantastic day.